Shouldn't ask if you're in a butter, I should ask. The meeting's not.
And Neil's here, so we're all set.
I hope you don't mind I took your seat, I needed to be closer to the plug this time.
All right, it's a little after 6:30, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. John Crist is excused this evening, so as vice chair, I am stepping into the chair position tonight. We will start with a roll call. I am here, Rebecca, Phil.
Yep.
Neil.
Present.
Mike.
Here.
Susan.
Here.
And Zach Tyrell is not here, Mike Bouchard is absent, as is Peter Julia and Mark Sturgeon. So we will move on to a review of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to review from our August 3rd site visit and planning board meeting. Let's start with the site visit minutes from August 3rd. Any edits, comments, corrections for the August 3rd site visit minutes?
John's really good at that, he's missing. I'm gonna give Neil a minute to grab his. I don't have any edits for the minutes of August 3rd of the site walk. Would you like a motion to approve?
I would love a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes from the August 3rd site visit, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Moving on to the minutes from our August 3rd meeting after the site visit. Any comments, corrections for the August 3rd minutes?
No corrections, but I would like to commend Joseph for the accuracy and the brevity of writing.
Thank you, and as we're collaborating.
Oh, good. Amy, too?
Thank you.
Hearing done, I'll move to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Great. Joseph, have there been any communications received?
So there have been a few communications related to cases that come up later on the agenda, but there was one additional piece of communication that I wanted to bring up to the board. And I'll try to keep it pretty brief here. But the town of Plymouth is a member of the National Flood Insurance Program, so the town has adopted floodplain development regulations into the zoning ordinance. This is Article 7, so this is a requirement of being a part of the National Flood Insurance Program. These regulations need to follow the FEMA requirements, which is the reason that they were updated last year. That was after a compliance review by the state that found we needed to make a couple of updates to them because they were just a little old, which we have done and those passed. So our regulations now match the most recent standards from the state. However, at the same time, there is a remapping of Grafton County's flood zone. And as a part of that process, you know, the town, so there has been a, basically for the past few years, this process has been going on, and the comment period just ended. So the town has received a letter of final determination on this, which means that the maps that were developed are now considered final and will go into effect in February of next year. So this triggers a six-month period for towns to make sure that their regulations are good to go as far as floodplain requirements, which ours currently are. The only thing that this means for the town, since we're up to date on our floodplain section, is that the map reference in the zoning ordinance currently refers to the 2008 flood maps, which are, will no longer be up to date. So the Office of Planning and Development of the state has been very proactive in, you know, working with towns to make sure that there aren't any issues, and we don't envision there will be. But so this is a unique part of the zoning ordinance in that state statute says that specifically the date of the flood maps referenced in the floodplain development section, and that alone can be updated in the zoning ordinance by vote of the governing body, so the select board, and does not go to town meeting. Any changes to the section would have to go to town meeting, but the state is developing and will send towns a bottle resolution that, for the select boards to adopt, changing just that 2008 to February 8th, 2023. And they expect to get that to us in the next couple of months. So I just wanted to give the board a heads up that it's still early, but we did receive that letter informing us that that's what we'll need to do, as will all other towns in Grafton County, just essentially following the steps that are outlined by the state. But I do have, if anybody wants, I have some handouts that go over the process, what that looks like. So if anybody would like them, I'm happy to share.
So any action moving forward is on the responsibility of the select board, not the planning board?
Correct.
We've already done our job.
Correct. Since the planning board and the town meeting adopted the changes to the floodplain section that were recommended by the compliance audit, we're essentially good to go. It's just a matter of updating that date that...
And you said the select board has the authority to do that?
Correct.
Yep.
That is the select board's, you know, job under RSA 67457. And I believe that's the only part of the zoning ordinance that could be even remotely updated without the town meeting's vote. So it's unique in that way, but it was adopted to allow, you know, because of the timeline, if we had to adopt zoning changes through town meeting by February 8th, 2023, we just couldn't because of how town meeting falls. And since it's just the date of a map, they changed the law at some point to allow that. But certainly can provide further updates as we get more information on that. But at this point, we just know that it will need to happen over the next six months. We don't have that language or anything yet.
Great. All right.
Thanks.
Okay, so that was, that was it?
Yep.
Great. Next up, we have a continuation of a hearing for Page Street Self-Storage Facility. This is a site plan review application from Vico LLC to begin phase development of a self-storage facility and associated improvements at the end of Page Street on parcels 208-097-031 and 208-097-032. All right, so we have had some more information on this application. We've had the, we've also done a site visit. We have sent our, had our town engineer look at the application materials and made some suggestions of the applicant, and the applicant has come back and responded to each one of those. I'm not sure if we need to hear any further from the applicant at this point. Certainly can if we want to get a summary of those. What do folks want to hear, what would be helpful for the board? Would we like to hear a response from the applicant's engineer on the request from our engineer?
I wouldn't mind a highlight and just a run-through of the changes. Is that something you could address?
Great. Just make sure you speak from the microphone there, and good luck with the easel.
Yeah. Can I just leave it here? Oh, gosh.
He wasn't kidding.
Let me just move.
Perfect.
Oh, yeah, there we go.
And just so we know, we do have two big copies, and there are some...
Manageable ones.
11 by 17 that we're all, that are passed out to.
Yep. On Nick's schedule from Dubois and King. So really, the major changes have to do with the drainage system and how we're collecting stormwater. We're first gonna collect into a catch basin, which will be a four-foot inside diameter structure. And then that will have a pipe that discharges into a dry well. So previously, we had it all as one structure with a sump at the base of the dry well. At, as was recommended and suggested, we separated the two to give some pretreatment. So the catch basin will provide pretreatment in advance of stormwater going into the dry well. We, we did, I think, since the public hearing in June, we did do test pits on the site to confirm the soils that we had out there and that the dry well system would function as we designed. And I think the only other change was improving this radius on this driveway turn. We adjusted that radius so that it was just suggested that it would make easier maneuvering for trucks turning and using it as like a hammerhead turnaround. That's, that's pretty much it.
What's the seasonal high water table there?
Seasonal high water table was 553.
Seven feet below just a grade. Six feet below grade at the road. Pretty big.
It's 60 inches below grade.
Depending on what grade you pick, there are a couple of grades on site, but...
Yeah, we shot it, we actually, when we did the test pits, we had a level in transit, so we came off of the benchmark. So we did, we did test pits in three locations. It's all very sandy soil, so sandy soil can be pretty tough to see where seasonal high water table is. We did get to an elevation at 553 where we could, we could feel like the... And I didn't do, I wasn't the one evaluating the soil. It was our other soils specialist in the office, so... But he did identify where the seasonal high water table was. We'd used the benchmark that's on site to get an elevation, and it was 553, yeah.
So your, your storage unit is gonna be above the seasonal...
Yeah, yep. We've got, I think...
By storage unit, I meant your structure.
The structure, and the stone actually is too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dry well.
Yeah, it's gonna have a stone storage area.
Yeah, my stone's at 555. And so we have two feet roughly above seasonal high water. Nope, 555, 554. We had 12 inches, yeah.
Thank you.
On page C1.
Was, was the berm reconstructed to be wider than two feet as we...
Yeah, it's four feet, yeah.
So we do have a letter from the, from Mike Vignali that states that based on his observations, the project has been completed, fully stabilized, and in accordance with the approved plans, so...
All right, that's not this one, that's the other one.
Is that the...
Isn't that...
Oh, no, that's the other one, oh my gosh.
We're not stabilized.
Yeah, I'm like, wait, yeah.
He did provide a letter, though.
He did provide a letter. Do I have that letter?
Yeah.
No, that's, that's in the...
Okay, that's what I was looking for. I'm like, wait a minute.
That's at the front, and it's dated August 14th.
Okay. Oh, no.
I saw the earlier one that was dated.
It's not, no, not that good, no.
Do you wanna, do you wanna...
There's so many pieces of paper right now.
Yeah.
Does someone just want to read it, or give me the, thank you?
Yeah, so August 14th. "We've reviewed the revised nine-sheet plan set and revised drainage study, both dated August 4, 2023, prepared by Dubois and King. In accordance with our agreement with the town, based on this review, we find that all previous comments have been addressed, and the project is now acceptable from an engineering perspective." General comments and signature.
All right.
I'm ready for public comments.
Any other...
Open up the hearing.
I will open up the public hearing at 6:49. Members of the public would like, that would like to speak of any nature about this application can step up to the podium, state their name. Please try and keep your comments to three minutes. All right, seeing no public comments, I'm gonna close the public hearing 35 seconds later. Bring it back to the board. Any further discussion from the board?
I, I would just say that if Mike Vignali is confident that everything's addressed, and I see a stark difference from the last time they were here with the drainage, and I commend the applicant for the work that they've done to take care of any... Hopefully, there'll be no more flooding in the basement of the neighbors. And it seems like they've tried to take care of that, and I appreciate that. It is ag zone, I believe, it's not single-family home. So it's, it's appropriate, even though there are homes in the area, in that neighborhood, it, it's not single-family zoning, so that's all I'd have to say.
By which you mean it's a permitted use within the agricultural zone? Yeah.
And there was, I just want to point out as well, in the addendum, there was also a letter from the, or in the new addendums, there was a letter from the applicant responding to or raising some information, some points regarding the, you know, the conditions, which, you know, are outlined.
That was next. Yeah.
I will note that it sounds like Mike just gave us two findings of fact.
Yes. Thank you for...
Does that work for you?
Jumping the gun on that. I mean, I didn't mean that in a bad way. Thank you for doing that before we had to even think about it. So the things that are on my list of what we need to address before we think about, I think what's gonna be a conditional approval is...
Did we close the public hearing?
I did close the public hearing.
Sorry, thank you.
She did.
For taking attention.
It's good, please check my work right now, because it's been a long, long week. So the question of the fence, I think we could issue a condition of approval that is, has some language about the applicant needs to go to the ZBA for an eight-foot fence. And we need to maybe make some suggestions about what a fence that is within the context and character of the neighborhood, as the ZBA has charged us to do. The other pieces are thinking about phase development and that, what that means, and how we're issuing what active and substantial development is. And there's also inspection, construction inspections, and surety or bond, and how we want to handle that, both, well, partly for the phase construction and also just for the project in general. So those are the four things on my list.
So since we have the applicants here, I, part of my thinking is, you know, it seems like it would make sense... If there's not a defined schedule for phase one versus phase two, it would seem that the financial surety that we request for phase one should probably be released after phase one, but that a new surety be required before construction starts on phase two. But, you know, if those two, if those two sequences are gonna be close together, I would think it might be in the applicant's interest to just leave the surety with the town. But I don't know, I mean...
I want to make sure we're doing this with ease of execution as well, so...
I don't want to burden the town with monitoring that either.
But do you think it makes sense to have, I think it gives the applicant some flexibility too with the phase development? I'm assuming that's the purpose of the phase development, to not just have the surety or the bond be tied to the entire project. Same with the substantial development...
Yep.
As well, so... So did everyone get a chance to read the memo that Joseph wrote? So the applicant has provided some requests as far as conditions on the approval. I think maybe they're best read summarized in Joseph's memo to the board that just offers some suggestions in there. So did everyone get a chance? This was something we just got today, so I just want to make sure everyone gets a chance to, to review that.
So can I ask a question of the applicant? In, in your letter, you request that if, if active and substantial development for phase two... Sorry. Vico requests that active and substantial development for the entire development be defined as the completion of the drainage system for phase one, as well as erosion control measures. If active and substantial development is defined as including portions of phase two, Vico requests that the active and substantial development for phase two be given a four-year timeline rather than the typical two. Is that, do you think four years is sufficient for your plans for the...
I do, I do. But the, our intent here is to build out phase one, get it filled up, make sure that we're comfortable with the market conditions before we start phase two. So for us to be able to accomplish that in the standard two years for the second phase isn't terribly realistic, so that's the reason for that request. But I believe that four years is sufficient. Thank you.
So from a procedural standpoint, do we need some more findings of fact if we're gonna make a decision?
I think we need to determine what we're gonna do for these, for, I mean, yeah. We can, we can do some more findings of facts, but I think making it, and we need to talk about the fence and the engineering inspection as well.
Right, so the fence, didn't the applicant indicate...
Can we stay on the, the active and substantial development and the distance we're there? So...
I'd like to give as much as four years for the phase two.
So, yeah, can we do two years for phase one and four years for phase, phase two? So we could say September 1st, 2025 for phase one? And then, I, I'm hesitant to give the entire project four years. I think active and substantial for phase one, I think, is reasonable, and then September 1st, 2027 for, for phase two?
I like that.
I'm comfortable with that.
Sure.
All right. Check on that one, all right. I think the, we can talk about fences, or we can talk about the reclamation bond next?
Let's go with fences.
Okay, fences it is. So two things with the fences. One is the eight-foot fence versus the six-foot fence. The eight-foot fence, does everyone, can, can someone pull up a...
Was it a variance they needed for the extra two feet?
They need a variance for an eight-foot fence. They have, is it variance or a special exception?
We have a special.
Special exception.
Special exception, okay.
And they're okay with the six-foot.
They're good with the six-foot fence, but they need a special exception for the eight. I think...
To better accommodate the neighbor.
To better accommodate the neighborhood. The applicant has specifically asked us to not put a condition to say they, a conditional approval on getting the eight-foot fence. And I'm inclined to, to agree with that, that I think, to leave it in the hands of the zoning board, but they have, the zoning ordinance allows them to have a six-foot fence. I don't, I don't think we should put a conditional approval on getting the eight.
I, I think it would make sense for us to include some language that the applicant must make a good faith effort to attempt to obtain a very, a special exception for an eight-foot fence along that property line. But that I don't, I don't think that it should be a condition of approval that would negate approval if it were not granted.
I think the condition should be a, they, they need to seek, seek a special exception from the zoning, from the zoning, from the ZBA. Does that, does that work?
Great, I agree with that.
Say, because that sounds like it's different than what Phil just said.
No, that, that's my intent.
I think beyond...
My concern is that...
To try for it, not to get it, is...
Well...
Yes.
To attempt, okay.
Yep.
My, my goal is, I'd like to point out that I don't think we should, I don't think we can make this of a conditional approval, because if the ZBA denies the eight-foot fence, the whole project is denied. Whereas if we ask them to make a good faith effort to seek a variance, then...
So I'm comfortable with what you're...
Yeah, I guess I'm just taking out, I'm wordsmithing you a little bit, Phil. I think just not saying good faith effort, but to say that they need to, to appear before the ZBA to get a special exception.
Okay, okay.
Does that make sense? Yeah, okay. The next is, so we've, well, left it to the applicant to go before the ZBA on that one, but the ZBA has thrown it back to us to determine what the character, a fence, a privacy fence that fits within the character of the neighborhood.
They have a six-foot vinyl fence proposed. That being said, do you have a, you have a comment? Would you like to address that?
If I can.
So there's a number of fences here, so I can understand why there's some confusion. So basically, there are two kinds of fences. There are fences that provide privacy for the butters on the property lines. Those fences were not something that we've requested approval from, from the ZBA.
Those fences were not something that we've requested approval from, from the ZBA. The approval from the ZBA had to do with the security fence along the frontage, nothing to do with the abutters. And it's.
That's the existing one though, right? Existing approval?
It is the existing approval, but that's the one that the ZBA asked the planning board to weigh in on in terms of,
Okay, thank you.
Of that fence, not the privacy fences.
Could you hold up the, the site plan and just show where that, just to make sure we're all on the same page that we know?
I see what you mean.
So, the easiest way to describe it is that it's along the frontage. So, if this is page three here, it's along here, here, and here with the electronic gate here where the entrance is. Is that clear?
Yes.
That's the security fence.
Yes, and that's the one that the ZBA is asking the planning board to weigh in on. The plan calls for a six-foot chain link fence, and that's what we're proposing to.
To install.
I think that's, I think that's the most appropriate, honestly, I mean.
If we're looking for something that is security and see-through, I think that's, to me, a chain link fence, unless we're going to go with like, you know, some razor wire or something, which I don't think fits within the character of the neighborhood. I think the chain link is, is probably the best, the best option, so. And I don't think it's incongruous with the rest of the, with the character of the neighborhood.
Either, given, given the nature of the development, I think it's inappropriate material for the fence.
And is the eight-foot fence request for the privacy fence, or is that for the whole thing?
Could you, could someone show on the, on the site plan where the eight-foot, where you'd be requesting the?
Just the eight feet.
So, so the eight-foot fence would be along this.
The abutter.
Yeah, the abutter property, right here.
And what about the phase two abutter on the other side?
That's here, and that's a six-foot vinyl fence.
Okay.
This is proposed as an eight-foot chain length fence with privacy.
Security slats, okay.
Slats.
Okay.
Okay.
And on the plan, will, and I can, you've got that all listed here, yep, yep, yep.
All of that information is on the plan.
Thank you.
And there's actually even information on the plan that, that I believe says that will, it will approach the ZBA for permission for that. I think that's right on the plan, not to suggest that you can't make it a condition as well.
I agree with this, I think we'll probably want to have it in a condition.
Note eight, note eight on the plan, on page C1 says, "The proposed fence along lot 208-92 will be eight feet high if approved by the zoning board. If not approved by the zoning board, the fence will be a minimum of six feet high. The fence will include, include privacy slats along this segment only."
Okay, so that.
That's on the, yeah, that's.
That's against the.
Is that the right? Oh, 208-92, what about 208? Wasn't there a question about the fence along 208-97 as well? No?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, so it's only the 208-92 that's in question?
No, they, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so fences.
So, I don't think we need to address fences. I mean, other than the, the character, I mean, the ZBA asks us for, you know, opinion of character, and I think the chain link offense along Page Street is appropriate. But, you know, I think note eight deals pretty adequately with the fence along lot 208 hyphen 92.
Yep. I think, yes, I think we should still maybe have, we should have it just for ease and clarity for enforcement and checking that it should be in, as a condition, does that?
Well, I thought the condition made it, I didn't think we would want the condition.
That they have to go to the ZBA to get the?
Yeah, they have to go to the ZBA to seek it.
As a condition?
Okay.
Is that, I mean, I just, I feel like having it as, in the notice of decision, I think, might be the most clear way to have that in there, I don't know.
And it's noted on the plan as well? Can we make note of that in that condition, as noted?
As noted in the plan.
On plan?
Yep. Of course.
So, my understanding is that conditions that you impose on the approval have to be satisfied within one year? What our request is a requirement that we be required to go before the zoning board of appeal, before we receive the first building permit, which might be sooner than a year or later than a year. So I'm wondering if you might consider that.
Can we just throw that into like the two-year, the, I mean.
Active and substantial.
Phase one.
Yeah. The, the, does that, does that work?
Yeah.
And this is where I think it's good to have the, the condition in the approval, because that allows us to put a timeline in there and determines when it needs to happen as well, that it's not going to happen at the end of, of phase four, I mean, phase, phase two.
Yeah, if you, if you include it as a, as a condition, I believe that you have to speak to the timeline, because if you don't, then the requirement is automatically that it has to be, has to be completed within one year. So what we're asking is that you set a timeline for that specific condition that would include a time up until we achieve the first building permit.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with a building permit.
Yeah.
Condition, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Glad that works for you, that works.
Are we good to move on from fences?
Yeah.
Okay. I think the engineering inspection is another comment, a typical condition that we put on site plan review applications. The applicant has asked that it's limited to the erosion control and drainage systems only. And judging, after reading Joseph's response, I, I don't feel like there's really that much discrepancy between what the applicant is asking for and what we typically do, which is checking erosion controls, drainage installation, and a final and pre-construction meeting. Will that, does that fit?
Could I, could I ask you to just, something like that? What, what we don't?
What we would prefer not to do is to get him involved in inspecting the building and the pavement and all of those kinds of things. Those don't, don't have anything to do with the town. The drainage system and the, and the environmental protection makes sense to protect the town from, and the environment and the abutters. But beyond that, to get the town involved in inspection of pavement and things like that potentially creates some kind of a burden on the town. Because I'm going to, if, if he's going to inspect the pavement, I'm going to rely on him. And if it's not done properly, then I'm going to hold him responsible. And I, I just don't see why the town would want to get involved in the pavement on a private piece of property.
The town's not going to take responsibility of this area.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
This is what we have here, that the, construction inspection visits include checking erosion controls, drainage inspection, and a final and pre-construction meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
I believe the purpose of those inspections are to, as you said, check the drainage, the erosion controls, things that will impact abutters, and it's to make sure that everything is built as per the plans that the board approved. I mean, that's ultimately the, the purpose that the board asks for those typically, so.
Particularly the stuff that's under the pavement that you can't see once construction has been completed. Okay.
Yeah, that's very typical, the erosion, what you're requesting.
I apologize, I'm still confused. I understand drainage, I understand erosion control. I don't understand why the town would get involved in inspecting work that takes place on a private piece of property.
Hang on one second, can you add some clarity, Joseph, to final and pre-construction meetings and what that might entail?
Yeah, sure, I mean, it's, it's exactly what you have in front of you for, actually, the Lakes Region Mental Health Site, where, so prior to construction, a pre-construction meeting is, you know, the town's engineer, typically the applicant's engineer and builder get together and discuss the phasing of the project, and at what stages the town's engineer needs to be brought in to review installation of specific items, so specific catch basins or construction of the dry wells, just as examples. So that's, that's typically what a pre-construction would be for. And then the final is, you know, sort of a final walkthrough, which, like, you know, the letter for Lakes Region Mental Health, the town's engineer goes through and certify, essentially certifies that, you know, he's observed the installation of the improvements and believes that, you know, it was installed correctly and as per the plans, including the erosion controls and other things. So it's sort of his final sign-off that, you know, the plans were followed. So those are the, that's, that's sort of the purpose.
And that would be done, so in this case, just speaking hypothetically, that would be done after there's a storage unit on there? Then the project is complete and we're just making sure that the as-built match the, the existing conditions on site.
That would be my understanding. Typically, typically Mike McNally proposes a schedule based on his review of the plans, based on what he thinks needs to be checked, you know, given what he's seen. I mean, you, you could specify, but he, you know, in the past, my understanding is that he's proposed a schedule typically based on his review of the plans, but that would be, that would be, I suppose, to the board.
I don't think the inspection of the asphalt and all that on a private, I don't think that's inclusive in his inspection, is it? I don't think they do that on private.
I mean, I'm, I'm not, so thinking about other ones, I'm not aware of that being an item on the list typically. I can't say for sure that he would never suggest that there's a need for that. But, you know, my understanding is that I haven't really seen that when he's put together schedules of construction inspection, where he's specifically checking the asphalt unless it's for a road or something like that. But, again, I don't, he hasn't proposed, since the board hasn't requested construction inspection yet, he hasn't developed that schedule yet, so I, you know, I couldn't say for sure, you know, unless the board made some provision.
As a general rule, inspections would require a visit when the subgrade is, has been prepared, and then it would be inspected again when all the structures have been put in place before they're backfilled.
That's really, that's, that's my experience as well.
That's what we would generally expect.
I would agree with Neil that Mike would, at a bare minimum, not, maybe at a maximum, want to make sure that the pads, it's concrete pads, correct?
You mean the foundations? Yes.
That he would want to make sure they're, where they are on the plan. So it's probably a tad more than just drainage.
If I could just comment on that, in addition to whatever inspection you ultimately agree to, we're required to provide you with an as-built plan. The inspector is not going to be able to go out there and look, make a visual inspection and determine whether the buildings are where they're supposed to be. That surety is dealt with by the as-built plan that we have to submit to you. And that's, that's, I think that that's different from the inspections that he might do. Does that help? Does that make sense?
So, I, I think.
I think so, I.
I think, I think we're dancing around the same thing. I think, I, I don't think we need to get this involved in that. I think what we do usually is what you're asking for.
Okay.
And if we need to put some other language in there that makes you feel better, we can talk about that. But I think I would, I would defer to our town engineer to be familiar enough with our zoning ordinance, our site plan review regulations, to be able to say, this is what we need to make sure that, that we're working with the developer to protect the interest of the town. Does that?
Yeah, that, that makes perfect sense to me. But to have him get involved, for instance, if the requirement was that he was going to have to do inspections to make sure that everything on the plan was done as it was supposed to be done, that effectively means that he's got to inspect the buildings and we, you know, I don't think that's in anybody's interest. I'm happy to defer to your judgment about the language there.
I think the request in your request is very typical of what happens.
That's fine, I'm sure it'll work fine.
All right. So, we're good with the construction inspections? All right. One more. The reclamation bond, and how we, which is another typical thing. I think there's enough site work here that that makes, that makes sense. Does everyone agree? And how we handle that with phased, and we talked, did we talk about this already? Oh my gosh.
No, not the bond.
Not the bond. We talked about the phase development. I think handling the phase development with the bond makes sense to do phased, I mean, in the, in the same way that, unless it makes it somehow easier for the applicant if the phases are going to get compressed. But I don't know if, I don't want to put an undue burden on any sort of administration that needs to happen with this, so.
Yeah, I think, so that, you know, the, the potential language in the staff report was, prior to construction of each phase, the applicant shall provide suitable financial surety for site reclamation in an amount provided by the applicant's engineer, confirmed by the town's engineer. Surety for each phase may be released in part corresponding to work completed or in whole when the corresponding phase is substantially completed. So in my mind, it's, you know, that, that is a, you know, that sort of sounds like what the board is discussing, where, you know, it, when the town is approached to begin phase one, that's when the phase one bond would be needed and likewise for phase two. But that was just, that's potential language the board could use, not, it could be handled in other ways too. But that, that seems, to my understanding, to be in line with what the applicant was, was asking for as well.
Anything else that we need addressing before we think about findings of fact? More findings of fact?
I think we're in good shape.
All right. So, we have at least two findings of fact so far. Yeah, I don't.
It's an appropriate use within the engine.
Yeah.
Everyone was, met the drainage concerns.
And that the engineer's concerns have been addressed.
Yep. Thank you for those, Mike.
I would say that I would offer a finding of fact that it seems that there is a market for this service in this community. When I tried to find a storage unit a few years ago, they were awful. So I, I don't think this is something that will be built that will be underutilized. I think it would be a good use of that space.
The applicant has addressed work with abutters concerns for fencing.
Mm-hmm.
I think ingress and egress is appropriate for what it is going to be. It's not going to overburden the area.
I agree. I think the applicant has demonstrated that while the amount of traffic will be more than the existing traffic, it's not as much as the potential traffic that would be there if it were developed for residential use.
They have limited operating hours.
Mm-hmm.
I need that.
You got a good collection there?
Yeah.
Are you ready for a motion?
I think we would be, as long as we're just making, we're, we're good with all the conditions. I mean, some of them are pretty, we've added some unique flavor to some of these conditions, so.
Do you accept a motion by citing the conditions we've already discussed?
I would just ask the board if there is still, you know, the other condition, which I didn't bring up earlier, but the mention from the first meeting that the applicant offered to grant the town an easement suitable for turnaround of Plymouth Highway Department snowplow vehicles at the end of Page Street, if that's a condition the board would like to include.
I mean, are you asking them to change their plan?
No, no, they've already addressed this, they've already, by making that, that turnaround bigger, that was for the plow turnaround there.
All right.
That's the hammerhead?
Mm-hmm.
That would be if they wanted to essentially de the town, or grant the town an easement over that portion of the turnaround that's required for snowplow turning movements. And that's on page, uh-
C1. C2.
Yeah, and then there's a detailed truck turning movement diagram on D1, which shows that it, that snowplow turnarounds would have to back to a certain extent onto the property, onto the driveway, which is what they were referring to, I believe, when referencing that easement, which would be, ultimately it would be up to the select board to accept the easement, but they would only, you know, presumably that would only happen if the board so chose to make that a condition of approval, which is for the board's consideration.
And that's amenable to, yeah.
It is, but Joseph just brought up a good point. We're happy to offer the easement. We can guarantee that the, that the select member will accept it. So if you'd not make a contention on-
Yep.
The select accepting it, that would be helpful.
Okay. So, our conditions are, the applicant will, um, submit an application to the zoning board before, for an eight-foot fence, as mentioned in note E.
Prior to start of construction.
Prior to filing a building permit?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And condition?
The applicant will offer an easement to allow for snow removal truck turnaround, as referenced in one of the notes. Three? Um, let's see. We're good with the engineering inspections. The standard language we have that the, someone else want to fill in the language because I'm drawing a blank on how to exactly say that, but the condition of approval will be to, construction inspection by the town engineer. The active and substantial development must occur in phase one by September 1st, 2025, and in phase two, September 1st, 2027. And then Joseph suggested language on the reclamation bond.
So what was that date for the active and substantial for phase one and two?
September 1st, 2025, and September 1st, 2027.
Can I suggest a condition that require that separate reclamation bonds be issued for phase one and phase two, and that when the phase one project is complete, the phase one reclamation bond be released, and the phase two reclamation bond be placed prior to start of construction for phase two? Is that sufficient? It would be released at the end of construction for phase two. Do we have any other conditions?
I don't.
I move that we approve the project with the conditions as discussed.
Second. Any discussion, or further discussion? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any objections? Okay. Thank you for all the work you've done on this.
Thank you to the public for showing up for all the meetings and voicing your concerns and helping to make it a better, better project.
I just lost my agenda.
Any adjustment?
Oh, you know, the date.
Simple subdivision.
Waiver request for the dumpster?
For the what?
Waiver request for the dumpster. I just saw that.
I think that might have been, I think we handled that in the acceptance of it.
That's already been done.
Accepted as complete, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So we did issue a waiver for it?
We accepted it as complete with the waiver that they had requested, yeah.
We approved the plan as shown.
Yeah.
Which included the waiver for the dumpster.
All right. So next up, we have a boundary line adjustment on 159 and 167 Reservoir Road, between parcels 104-004 and 106-005, resulting in no increase or decrease in total acreage for either parcel, which are 1.06 and 59.7 acres. The properties are owned by Kyle and Rena Hancock and William and Denise Bolton. All right. Bill?
I see you lost the audience. I'm Bill Bolton. I live at 167 Reservoir Road, and a couple of months ago, we sold a house and property at, at 159 Reservoir Road to Kyle and Rena Hancock, and Kyle's in the audience at least. And part of the condition of the sale was to increase the frontage at 159 to 200 feet. It would be an additional 50 feet. So we agreed to that. We ended up having to, you know, resurvey it, and what left us at 167 Reservoir was 100 feet of frontage, which is, seems to be less than the 150 feet requirement for, you know, property outside of water and sewer. And what, in consultation with Joseph, it appeared that we do comply with access to a back lot with 100-foot frontage that was left. And I'm seeking approval for the subdivision or adjustment application, and also the back lot access at our current property. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. I think, yeah, so we'll need to look at, I think the way, it's a good time to look at the waivers and discuss the completeness of this application. We have two different documents. One is hot off the press that was just handed out while we were seated, and the other is something that I believe came in our packet. So I think just reviewing these waivers before we accept the application as complete makes sense.
Just as a disclosure, I'm in a butter. Does that count me out of anything?
You should probably recuse yourself.
Okay.
It's up to you, Sue. So if you feel you can't be partial, then you can step down. If you feel you can make a decision, it's, it's really up to you.
I guess I will disagree slightly with Mike in that I think that the reason why it's a standard practice to recuse yourself as in a butter is because we can't always judge whether or not we're being impartial in certain circumstances. But that's, that's my opinion, and I leave it to you. I can't tell you to recuse yourself. It also does, recusing yourself when there is a question about that does protect the board and the town a bit too, in case there's any question for the decision we make, and there's somebody who might have some interest. And I'm not speaking, I'm looking at you, but I'm not speaking- I understand. At you directly. But it does protect the town in case, you know, there is a question about whether there's not, there's somebody who's making a decision that has some vested interest in the outcome of that decision, so.
And I agree with Rebecca, what she said too.
So then I should recuse myself.
Still have a quorum?
We do still have a quorum, yeah. Which is why you didn't see us celebrate when you, when you showed up.
That's why we really were happy to see you.
Yeah.
Not just, it's also nice to see you, but.
[laughing]
Thank you, Sue.
Yep.
If she does recuse herself, you should sit in the audience.
Okay.
Not a big deal.
So I think all of, in my opinion, all of these waivers are pretty standard for a, a minor boundary line adjustment. I guess, I mean, where there's no change in-
Area.
In acreage. I think, you know, especially considering that it, you know, we, we, the frontage situation changes, but with the idea that this is an acceptable back lot, then, to me, this is, in my opinion, a fairly straightforward case, so. So at this point, we do need to, if we're good with the waivers, we could, someone could make a motion to accept the application as complete. If we're, have some questions about them, we can certainly talk about them.
I move that we approve the application-
Acceptance.
Accept the application as complete.
Great. Any discussion, further discussion about waivers or the acceptance, or the completeness of this application? All right. All those in favor of accepting the application as complete?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, application is complete, and now we can look, talk about it more. Which one am I looking at here? This is the, all right, any, does anyone need any further clarification on the back lot situation?
I do.
So, was in the, yeah, in the staff report, there's the description there.
Would you like me to read it for the audience too?
That'd be wonderful.
Sure. So subdivision regulations, section eight, subsection R says, "Back lots are permitted with a minimum 50 feet of road frontage under the following conditions." So the back lot and adjacent front lot must both front on the same street. The back lot and adjacent front lot must have a minimum combined frontage on the same street equal to the minimum combined frontage of two lots, as set forth in the zoning ordinance for the zone in which the lots are located. If the lots are in two different zones, the greater road frontage requirement shall apply. For the purposes of calculating road frontage requirements, only one back lot may be combined with any one front lot, and access to the back lot must be by a corridor at least 50 feet wide. So the combined frontage, you know, the frontage requirement in the egg zone for lots on well and septic system are 150 feet. So the minimum combined frontage needs to be a minimum of 300 to have a back lot and a front lot. And then that, that is also in section 304 of the zoning ordinance, the two cross-reference. So the table of frontage requirements references this section of the subdivision regulations and says, you know, here are your frontage requirements. In the case of a back lot, your minimum frontage is 50 feet, and then it kicks you over to that section of the subdivision regulations. So it's not commonly used, but it is, you know, it is in there, it is in the zoning ordinance to allow as little as 50 feet in the event that you have two lots that you could have with the typical amount of frontage, but you don't want to, for whatever reason, give one a little more and one a little less.
Thank you for that description, Joseph.
No problem.
Any other questions or comments before I open it up to a public hearing? All right, it is 7:37, and I would welcome any member of the public to come and speak of any nature about this project.
So one, one comment?
Yep.
I have to say that Joseph is a very good instructor on how to approach this. On that side, this side is very helpful to have him in that office.
The town of Plymouth is extremely lucky to have Joseph. He's doing his superior job.
Well, thank you.
You've got that for the minutes, right? I'm writing it down. Let's make sure we don't miss that when we review the minutes in September. I did say of any nature on this project, so. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7, almost 39. Bring it to, back to the board.
Finding of facts, he was, the applicant is following the subdivision waiver capabilities? Well, within it?
The applicant has, meets the requirements for a back lot?
The proposed lot lines very creatively skirt the well radius while not changing the net area of either lot.
I make a motion that we approve the applicant, approve the applicant's proposal.
Second.
Could you just have one, ease of discussion on that motion? So there is one minor difference between the, so the sketch portion of the plan and the notes differ in terms of what acreage they assign to map 106 lot four. The, the sketch portion of the plan says it is 1.06, and the note says it is 1.10. So that might be a condition the board wants to consider to just make them, make them the same.
What's the difference between 1.6 and 1?
1.06 and 1.10. So there's a minor discrepancy in the reported acreage.
1.04.
I don't think it's going to impact our decision, so I'm comfortable handling that as a condition of approval, that the plan be revised to show the accurate amount.
Mike, are you willing to amend your motion?
To, to have a surveyor determine which it is?
So only the surveyor can determine the correct amount. So my motion was to have the, have the plan amended to show the correct amount in both places.
Joseph suggested condition from the, the staff review says, "Applicant shall correct the acreage for parcel 106-004 and ensure it is shown accurately on the final plan."
I don't know if I'd be, I don't think I need it to be a condition. He's, they've met it either way. It's a matter of whether the applicant wants to fix that.
Well, I don't think we should record it with that.
It needs to be recorded correctly.
This is a legal document that gets recorded for future reference like that. But having a discrepancy like that on a plan can be a problem for title searchers down the road. It can affect their ability to, to transfer property down the road. It's better to have it resolved.
I'm amenable to that.
You were the second, so right, Phil?
Right, second.
Neil was the second.
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of conditional approval of this application? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Oh, any abstentions? All right, I didn't think so. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you can come back now.
It's cold over there.
All right. Thank you, Sue, for an abundance of caution on a simple application. Any informational or pre-application reviews? Okay. We have some other business from Joseph?
Yep, from Lakes Region Mental Health Center. So Sunshine Fisk, the CFO of LR MHC is present on Zoom, but-
Hi, Sunshine.
Big picture. The request is for release of the site reclamation- But big picture, the request is for release of the site reclamation bond for this project. So the board approved this in November of 2022. It was a site plan approval to reconstruct the parking, accessways, drainage system. And install a garage at the Lakes Region Mental Health Center site on Highland Street, 77 to 81 Highland Street. One of the conditions of that approval was for the applicant to post a reclamation bond. And that, you know, as, as we discussed earlier, the purpose of those bonds, you know, if the project goes uncompleted, it allows the, the town to sort of stabilize the site reclaim in terms of just fill in, seed, loam. But once the site work is done and there's, you know, nothing left that's a concern, the site is stabilized. There's really not much of a need for that bond anymore. So the applicant, Lakes Region Mental Health Center, reached out last week, I want to say, or, or in the past couple of weeks. And, you know, said we, we believe that it's appropriate at this time to release the bond and that's detailed in the letter that you have. Both the town's engineer and myself have been to the site. I spoke with Ed Drury and Travis Colby on Friday of last week. And, you know, as, as they've represented and as sort of Mike Fignalli has confirmed. The project has been completed and stabilized in accordance with the plans as far as the site work goes. The only outstanding item on the plan was the proposed garage construction. The actual foundation is in place for it, but the, the walls have not been completed. But the, the board did give them until. June 30th of next year to complete that, so that, that doesn't appear to be a concern.
And the outstanding, I mean, the, the site work is done and the reclamation bond is really to cover the site work. So even if they built a garage there, there would be no potential liability for the town, whether the garage gets built or not.
Make a motion that we release the reclamation bond.
Second.
We need some findings of fact.
I don't think we would on this.
So I would offer the finding of fact that the town engineer has provided a letter. So this is based on my field observations. The project has been completed in accordance with the approved plans.
Great, we're good with that? Alright, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Alright, so what we will need to do in this case is have the chair sign a letter to the bank that was issuing the bond and return that bond, so we will get that done as per the letter, send it off to this address that they've given us. So we can do that, you know, very shortly, get that letter typed up.
Okay.
Saying that the board has released the bond.
Great. Alright. The only other business is I was supposed to meet with the Energy Commission last week. The time was messed up. I didn't, another meeting, so either John or I will go to that next month. Any other committee or board updates?
I do have two, just notes for the board. So there are a couple of events if board members are interested. So obviously the Housing Committee is working on housing-related topics. There are a couple of housing-related webinars and, and other events coming up. So there is a Housing and Economy Conference in Manchester on October the 4th. It's a, it's a morning conference. And then there's also a webinar on August 29th for one hour. So the, the first conference is the Housing and Economy Conference put on by New Hampshire Housing. And then the second one, the webinar, which is actually the first one chronologically, that's, that's August 29th. Is a one-hour-long webinar by New Hampshire Business Review, but with speakers from the New Hampshire Association of Realtors and New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, or it's now called New Hampshire Housing. So if anybody is interested in the registration information for that, I'm happy to, happy to share it if it's of interest.
Could you pass that on to me?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'm, I'm registered. The, the one-hour NHPSR webinar is free. There's a $60 fee for the morning event in Manchester that's in person, but includes lunch, I think, or breakfast and lunch, something like that.
There is some budget for planning board development, right?
Yeah, I think there should be some, some training money in the budget.
I may try and attend the Manchester event.
Can you send me the information too as well, Joseph?
Definitely.
I think maybe it would be great to just send everybody the information so we can learn a little more.
We'll send both of those to the whole board. And the other follow-up was the new Planning and Land Use Regulation books. I had a, you know, if anybody does want a hard copy of the new update, if you could ideally let me know by tomorrow. I mean, obviously they're all available online. But if anybody does like the hard copy, we have the opportunity now to order some through Lakes Region Planning Commission. That is, you know, just a compilation book of all the planning statutes. And not, a huge amount has changed since the last one. But if you were frequently referring to the, the paper book, it's, it's good to have an updated copy sometimes, so.
Do we know what color it is this year?
They have not, I have not.
Does it matter?
Last year's was blue, the year before that was red.
I thought last year's was like a really nice plum color.
I do like having one. I, I, it's always, I can always find things more quickly in the book than I can online for some reason.
Yeah.
That's like the one place.
Got it.
Thank you.
If anybody else changes their mind, just send me an email tomorrow.
Jeff Hill Smith with the Select Board this past Monday.
Oh, good.
And he's, he's working with Plymouth Village Water and Sewer to get approval.
For what?
For them to take the water.
Oh, for the, oh, at the development up there, yeah.
They need to accept the system.
Okay, great, that's, that's great.
Sewer system.
Are they working in good faith with him?
Hmm?
Do you think they're working in good faith?
I hope so.
I hope so too.
You know, they, I, I think that, you know, they just have to be comfortable that the system you put in is, is satisfactory.
They gave them the specs originally.
They're doing inspections.
It's, my understanding is that whole development is, uses pressurized sewer lines. Which is, you know, most, most homes just have a gravity, gravity drain and because of the topography of that development, it's, they're all pumped systems. So I don't know if they pump to a station where it opens up and gravity is from there.
Some are gravity and some are pumped up.
Yeah. But, you know, it's probably, there may be different elements than what water and sewer is used to dealing with. I would imagine it might be a little bit of a challenge or a learning curve to adapt to that uniqueness.
They would have specs if it were to be, if they were to take it over, that you'd have to build it to. And they must have given Jeff those specs or, or to.
Or maybe not.
Or to George Greer way back when.
We don't know. There's, you know, been several owners of this project and it, it's been going on for 30 something years.
I think that's the challenge is there's just, there's a lot of unknowns that, yeah.
Hopefully we can get it approved.
Yep.
I did, I was, I was talking to somebody at work the other day who complimented the town of Plymouth and said that Jason is a, is one of the better water and sewer operators in the state.
Really?
He's very good.
Yeah, he is.
Make sure that's in the minutes too.
Definitely.
I'm, I'm not going to say who said it, but.
Alright, any public comments? Accolades, comments are, yeah, all acceptable. Alright. Does anyone have some findings of facts for adjournment?
Before 8 o'clock?
Yeah.
Hey, how about that?
They go faster with Rebecca.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.